All right, it looks like we have pretty much everybody here. There are several council members that are participating online. So I'm going to go ahead and call the meeting to order for July 29th at 6:00 PM. And before we do a rule call, and I'll ask you to join me in the Pledge of Allegiance, please, thank you.
(Inaudible)
Thank you very much. Welcome to our new Reserve Officer in Council Chambers this evening. Good to have you here. And so Ms. Trimble, will you go ahead and do a rule call for us, please?
(Inaudible) Anderson. Present. Basara. Campbell.
Here.
Carlino.
Present.
Farman.
Present.
Gwen Jones.
Present.
Jordan.
Present.
Nelson.
Present.
Nugent.
Present.
Savage. Cheryl.
Present.
Vasika.
Present.
And we do have a quorum.
Thank you, Ms. Trimble. And let's keep our eye out for Counselor Basara. She did say she was going to be online. She just may be tardy, so we'll keep our eye out for her. All right. Thank you very much. Before we get started, I just wanted to ask for a couple of agenda changes. First being, if there is no objection, Counselor Nugent would like to speak to postponing the or delaying the rule change. That is Agenda Item. Let me just get to it. 222, 9.1C.
Yep. And I sent an email to all of you. Just with the storm and stuff, I didn't get to work on it with a few of you like I wanted to, so just request to move it a week.
Any objection to that? Great. We'll go ahead and move that to a later date, assuming that that will be then Monday, August 5th. Okay. Great, thank you. The other thing that I thought would be good, just because, well, we don't have a large audience tonight. However, we have a loyal audience. Thank you for being here. And I'd love to do a storm update. I know I sent an email to all council members with the, you know, very robust thought that we'd actually have like a slideshow of photos together, and we are ready for something like that. But we did do a press conference, so during Item Number Four, I thought I would give a brief recap of that, rather than wait for Mayor's comments, if that's okay with folks? Okay. Okay, great. And so then with that, we'll go ahead and move on. Approval of minutes? We don't have any minutes. So moving on to Item Number Three is announcing any changes to the committee meeting agendas and the committee membership approvals. Ms. Trimble, are there any changes to our committees this week?
No changes that I'm aware of.
Great. Okay. Committee meetings then proceed as stands, and that schedule is online, easily locatable on our website. Fairly light agenda for committees this week. Looks like folks will be wrapped up around noon. Knock on wood there, huh? Great. So moving on to special presentations and proclamations. We do have a couple of special presentations this evening. We've got folks from the River Road Council, and we have the Lower Rattlesnake Council. So really nice to have you both here. And then we have a fairly, fairly light agenda here. There are no public hearings this evening, nor new business. We do have items on the consent agenda, and then one remaining regular business item, 9.1D, under the Housing Redevelopment and Community Programs Committee. So with that, I'd be happy to postpone my storm update and hear from our leadership Neighborhood Council updates first. And so the first is our River Road Council update. Come on up, and please say your name and spell your last name for our transcriptionist, please. Thank you.
Mayor Davis, members of the council. Good evening. My name is Chris Foster.
Oh, sorry about that.
Can you hear me now?
All right. We're back on.
Okay, good. Mayor Davis, members of the council, my name is Chris Foster, F-O-S-T-E-R. This is the River Road Neighborhood Council report. The absence of sidewalks in the River Road neighborhood is still a top concern within the community. So the leadership team, it plans on inviting a member of the city, probably from Public Works and Mobility, to give a short presentation at our September General Meeting, so people can learn more about the process of how curbs and sidewalks come about. It's not just magic, so there's money involved and whatnot. So we're trying to get it so that people can learn more about that. And also, as a result, well, related to that, also at the September General Meeting, we're going to ask people to volunteer for a Transportation Subcommittee for our neighborhood, and see if we can get people to volunteer for that, to work on this specific issue. So, and the idea behind that is to collaborate instead of complain, and to get people involved with the, with that whole process, and also maybe turn it into an opportunity instead of a problem. I think there's a lot of good ideas about alternative materials for sidewalks, for example, that could be interesting. It might be cost-effective, too. Also, the, our leadership team is working through the ins and outs of starting a regular newsletter that we can post online, neighborhood-specific. And so we've, we've come up with the first drafts of it, which I have here if you're interested. Nothing earth-shaking, but it's, it's a collaborative process. We decide, try to figure out what would be interesting and what people in the neighborhood should need, ought to know. That's neighborhood-specific. Finally, there's some thanks in order. We've noticed that Curtis Street and Davis Street are sporting a new coat of asphalt, and so we want to thank Public Works and Mobility for making that happen. I'd also like to thank Kristen Jordan and Sandra Vasika for their advocacy in this regard. So it's a, it's a step in the right direction, and now we're on to River Road. Also, we should take this opportunity to thank the people at Northwest Energy and the phone and cable folks for getting us back online as soon as they did. We had four power pulls down on River Road. There was a huge fir tree. It just took, dominoed them down. Two large trees on Curtis Street took the power lines and the cables down on that street. And so we were expecting the worst, and it came along faster than we thought. So we had power in my neck of the woods by Friday afternoon, and the cable and internet came on yesterday morning. So thank you to all those people. I know they're not getting a lot of rest right now, and I just wanted them to know we appreciate all the hard work they're doing. Also, just related to that, I was walking the dog this morning, and I noticed the National Guard folks at the fort, and so I wanted to thank them for coming all the way out from Helena to give us water and ice. They said that you came out, and so I thank them for their service, too. And that's all I have.
That's wonderful, Mr. Foster. Thank you very much. Appreciate that. And anybody have any questions or comments? Yes, Counselor Vasika.
I just wanted to thank you, Mr. Foster, for being very thorough, as always, and I really appreciated your very kind email the other day after those two get, digressurfaces. As shocking as it may be, may seem, we don't get that many very enthusiastically happy emails, so I was very happy to see that. And I'm happy to hear that everyone, although the River Road did have tremendous disasters happen with the trees, it does sound like everybody did come out safe, so that's good. So thank you for your update.
All right. Thank you very much. Appreciate that. Thank you for your participation, Mr. Foster, with, with your local government. All right, so next we'll move on to the Lower Rattlesnake Council update. Come on up.
Hi, everybody. Thanks for having us. I am Gracie Sanford, S-A-N-F-O-R-D. I'm going to stick to my notes, so that the minutes and what we submitted are accurate. So we met, the Lower Rattlesnake Leadership Team met in June, and we've been tracking a couple of issues for several years. One of them is the train horns at the Taylor Street Crossing and the Madison Street Crossing. So Taylor Street, that is near Drum Coffee and East Gate, and Madison Street, that's how you get, one of the two ways you get into the rattlesnake. So at the June Leadership Team Meeting, we invited Mayor Davis. Thank you for attending. Ward One City Council Representatives, including Eric, thanks for attending, and the Director of Public Works and Mobility, Jeremy Keen. And we had kind of a long discussion of next steps and what's been going on. Overall, good discussion. We had a few additional people from the neighborhood show up to our, our team meeting, which was nice to see, although it did get a little bit spirited. It's been, it's been a long time, 15, 20 years. People have been, been working on a new solution for the train horns. So we were able to give feedback and understand the paths forward to solve the issue, and know that things are still ongoing, not resolved yet. We are also, the Lower Rattlesnake Leadership Team are beginning to plan for our, what ends up being Annual General Meeting, that will happen early November. And we are still following any developments about what will happen with the Prescott School in the neighborhood. That's our, our second big issue that we like to keep tabs on. It's a, a big empty building, and we just want to know what's, what the latest is on that, whenever there's any news. So those are updates.
Excellent, Ms. Sanford. Thank you very much. And any questions for Ms. Sanford tonight? Any comments? All right. Well, thank you very much for being here and, and your ongoing participation, also with your Neighborhood Council and with your local government. We appreciate it very much. Thank you. All right. So thanks for letting me jump in on a storm update. I mean, it probably doesn't matter. I could probably do it later in the meeting, but it feels like, you know, this is such an amazing, intense, incredible experience that this community went through. It feels right to be able to acknowledge this early in our meeting. And so there was a press conference held earlier today, and we're hopeful there'll be some great coverage out there, and that information will also be shared on the Missoula County webpage as well, and so we'll make sure you have a chance to see that. Counselor Campbell, thanks for, for attending, and hopefully you can fill in some gaps for me here. My brain's sort of working on most cylinders, but not all cylinders, I think, in these last few days, which probably feels like everybody else. So I just wanted to acknowledge the incredible resilience that we have seen across our community, despite how challenging this was. We really saw just what makes the fabric of Missoula, Missoula. People really came out to help one another, and still are and will for some time. So it was, it was so heartwarming and tremendous to see that and continue to see that. Our local government agencies responded immediately on Wednesday evening. As many of you know by experiencing it and tracking the weather, Wednesday evening, there was a red flag warning for, for high fire danger, and also severe weather in terms of lightning storms. But what actually occurred was not predicted, and it was really something that, to use a, you know, a pretty common term, is a perfect storm. We were prepared from a local incident command network, you could say, city and county government, to be prepared for significant fire, quite frankly. These are high fire conditions. We are still in Stage Two fire restrictions, and, but of course, what ensued was, was much different. And it really is remarkable to have the team that we do. The city and the county have an emergency management plan in place, and that emergency management plan is exactly what went into place Wednesday evening. And so our first responders and Adrian Beck, who is the Director of our Office of Emergency Management, were in, in that office, basically in the basement of County Courthouse, Wednesday evening. It was pretty clear that, that there was something very serious occurring, and so Adrian Beck called CAO Dale Bickle and myself, and requested from, from me, the mayor, a clearance, a clearance to declare an emergency on Wednesday evening, which we did at about 11:30 PM. And what that does for our local resources, it just, it starts a cascading series of steps to take necessary action. In this case, it's, it's really to set up this, you know, this incident command scenario where you're deploying more resources to handle an emergency situation like that. It became clear on Tuesday morning how widespread the storm was across Missoula County and beyond. So Tuesday morning, the Board of County Commissioners and the Chair, Dave Stromeyer, declared the county an emergency, and what ensued then was also requesting an emergency declaration from the state. So Governor Gianforte signed that on Friday. There is a number of steps that have to be taken, and some, basically some costs incurred before we get to that point. So that's what you saw, Mr. Foster, which was the result when the state declares an emergency, resources from state agencies can be deployed locally as well. So the National Guard was able to come in and help us distribute ice and water, and then other state agencies can also, their resources can be utilized. The state doesn't write the city or the county a check for us in this case, you know, but they are able to utilize state resources in that case. We are also in process of, these are all the steps that you take with the assumption that we may be filing for a presidential declaration, which would allow us to access FEMA dollars. So it's yet to be determined, and I'm really talking outside of my wheelhouse here, so Dale, feel free to interrupt me if I'm saying anything incorrect. I cannot channel Adrian Beck. I wish I could, and if you have a chance to witness her present on this, you should. Actually, I'll put a plug in right now, that the county does a podcast, and I can send this out to council members as well, but she's done three podcasts recently that are very particular and specific to what we're talking about here, that are very informative and helpful to listen to. So I, I'm incredibly, just so pleased that we had no deaths or serious injuries as a result of this storm. It's actually quite remarkable. Certainly, I think people have some bumps and bruises and scrapes, but when it comes to significant injury or, or death resulting from the storm, we, we managed to avoid that, which I think is really commendable, and we're all lucky. So City Fire, Public Works, and Parks, our Missoula Police Department, County Public Works, immediately were deployed after assessing the situation to clear roadways, knowing that we had such a significant power outage, that sometime, you know, Wednesday night into early hours of Thursday morning and into Thursday morning, we realized that, I should say "we," but you know, the Office of Emergency Management recognized the significant power outage that the area had, which is around 40,000 Northwestern and Missoula electric co-op customers. So of course, that includes residential and commercial as well. So something of that nature and size is, is really pretty much unprecedented for our area. So immediately, our, our work was, life safety is the number one priority, and so making sure that those downed lines are located and that we have the ability to clear roads and sidewalks to get to those downed lines are number one priority. Here in Missoula, there is extensive damage to our urban forest, and I don't have to tell you that. Obviously, you know that by looking around or what you've experienced, but just to give some context, in 2015, we had a significant wind event, and we lost 150 trees on city property. And it was, it was substantial. We had large piles, and we, and that, we had to be dealt with for a while in terms of getting rid of that. As of today, we have 600 city downed trees just on right-of-way. That does not include city parks. We're estimating that we'll have about 1,000 downed trees just on city property. So we have about a tenfold increase in the impact of this storm. The debris management, really, you know, we've gone from a full triage emergency response, and we're shifting into response and recovery at this point. By far, the debris management is, is, is going to be a large challenge. That information is constantly updated. It's on, and I'll repeat this several times, it's missoula.co/storm. The city and the county collaborate through the Office of Emergency Management and a Joint Information Center, and the way that we collaborate is we make sure we have the same consistent information all the time. So that is why all the information gets put out through Missoula County. People had asked, why aren't, why isn't the city being, pushing out all this information? That's because we are in the room with the, the county, developing this information and putting it out there. So we really just want to make sure that we are never, obviously duplicating efforts. We want to be able to work hand in glove on that. So I mean, it's, I, I, I'm so incredibly grateful for our first responders and the city and the county staff, volunteers, and the community coming together in general. We had significant mutual aid come from other jurisdictions. That includes folks, they're called Team Rubicon, and they're a group of retired Forest Service employees and others that have specific skill sets that can come into emergency disaster areas like this, and they can be put to work immediately on complicated projects like this. Obviously, we can't set about anybody taking down tree debris from power lines, and, and you need a certified arborist and those kinds of things to be doing this work. So they came in, the city of Helena sent arborists. They also sent members of their Parks Department over today to be assisting in the tree debris removal. Department of Natural Resources and Conservation, Missoula Aging Services, they, they worked to bring a, a group of volunteers on the hotline and answered phone calls for folks. Red Cross, Adrian Beck, knowing the extent of the power outage, knew immediately that we would have people that absolutely had to have power to power up their personal devices and medical devices. So Red Cross came to Missoula on Thursday and set up at our Missoula County Elections Office. That also provided people a reprieve from the weather, and there were showers set up and a number of things. So Red Cross has mobilized in our community on two fronts. They had done this for the Butler Creek Fire, and then they set up for this emergency. So really incredible partners as well. Too many to name. Several faith communities, churches, community organizations that stepped up and helped provide showers and respite for people as well. I was honored to be able to help hand out ice and water at Fort Missoula Regional Park with the Community Emergency Response Team and the National Guard. We had about 1,000 vehicles drive through on Saturday for folks that, you know, were still without power and water, and, and not everybody, some people had water, but, but these were folks that still were without power, and, and it was incredibly heartwarming. I'll tell you what, it was, it was like a moment of humanity. People were really appreciative of being asked how they, how they were doing, and, you know, some people were feeling pretty all right, but some people were, were shaken up, you know? This was a really tough event. This event upended a lot of people's lives for several days. And, but people were so full of gratitude and appreciation. It was really heartwarming. Some people got out of their car and wanted to hug. It was, it was a beautiful moment. I have to just, I just wanted to share that with you. It was incredible. They're still there, and until we realize that everybody that is, is in need of, is no longer in need of ice, that'll, that'll wrap up. And I did want to also mention that the United Way has stepped up to create a volunteer Missoula, well, volunteermissoula.org already exists, and it was a place where organizations and people seeking help are matched up. But they put something specific on their website for this Missoula Storm, Missoula Storm 2024. And it's a place where people that want to volunteer specifically for this storm can submit information and get on a list. Organizations, more organizations are encouraged to sign up, and then people that need help are encouraged to go to this website. So it's volunteermissoula.org. It's the United Way of Missoula County, so please share this information with your friends and colleagues. And as this recovery continues, and it will continue for some time, as I mentioned, the amount of storm damage due to, to tree debris is very substantial, and people will be in need of assistance, I think, more and more as we move forward. So many people have offered their help, which is just fantastic. People sitting around this horseshoe and online offered their help significantly for days and still are. Thank you. One thing I just want to mention to folks is that when I talk about tree damage, there are still a lot of tree limbs that are broken, but up in the trees themselves. So as you are walking around, please look up and please be conscientious. The, any kind of wind, any major wind event, rain, anything like that, we could certainly see tree branches come down. The entire city staff is underway with a way that we will survey trees and then upload this information into a GIS system that will prioritize safety hazards first, first and foremost. But I just wanted to make sure that I really emphasize for folks that, that there still are dangers out there as a result of the tree damage. One of the ways that folks can get notified of very emergent situations is an app on your phone that is called Smart 911. And it's important to note that with the use of cell phones and, and federal communication regulations, the city of Missoula, the county of Missoula, nobody can just push out information onto your cellphone without you opting into something. So opting into Smart 911 guarantees that you will get emergency notifications. I would also encourage people to sign up for weather notifications, severe weather notifications. That will help people get more information, and, and in particular, before a storm hits. Quite frankly, after this storm hit, there was a period we were assessing, do we have cell phone towers? Or what, what, what is, how are we actually communicating with one another? But I have to say, from the moment on Wednesday night when, when I declared the emergency, and then the next morning, when our fire chief was seriously considering a stay-at-home order, because we did not know the intensity of the damage, this was early, early morning on, on Thursday morning, to a few hours later, only, it changed to emergency travel only. You can just see how these things happen quickly, but initially, we really didn't understand even what our communication capabilities were. So with that, I remind us all, and it's a good reminder for myself, to keep a few days of provisions in your home, including water. We don't live in an area, right? I mean, knock on wood, and I'm hopeful that this is not, not a common, common weather event, but we don't live in hurricane alley, or tornado alley, or hurricane zone, right? We don't really go through days of, of no power. And in this case, I know of folks just today that got their power on, and we do know of, you know, several folks that are still waiting to, to get their power on. So it's just a good reminder for us all to, to be prepared. And lastly, I'll just say, continue to check on your neighbors. You know, we saw some just incredible connection from strangers to strangers and neighbors to neighbors, and it's a really good takeaway. Hopefully, this is something that we can continue to carry forward in our community in terms of caring for one another. So I'll just wrap up there. Wondering if any council members have anything that they would wish to add to my, to my comments this evening? Yeah, Counselor Nugent.
Absolutely. Thanks for that update, and thanks so much for all you were doing behind the scenes. Especially, I think it's important for people to understand that the joint city-county communication and how that works, because, you know, I think people were kind of looking at those things. I, I know people who ran into you at the water and ice delivery and enjoyed that, so thanks for being out there.
Cool.
And I just want to reemphasize one thing you said. I spent several days over the last, actually, most of the last four days picking up debris and helping people, and the limbs in trees is a real big concern still. And when we were done yesterday, we were actually sitting under a tree, just relaxing, and then the wind picked up, and we looked up, and we're like, oh yeah, we shouldn't be under here without paying more attention. So it's kind of a reminder that even though we were out there all day, and just driving around town, you see limbs and trees everywhere. So I just wanted to reemphasize that. And again, thank everybody on the city staff and everybody else who's been working hard to, to help people get, get out of this. And obviously, those debris, debris piles are going to take quite a while to get through, so please be patient.
Yeah, boy, thank you for that. I'll just stay in the room, and then I'll go online there? Yeah, Counselor Vasika.
Yeah, I just wanted to say thank you to everybody who helped, city, county, Northwestern Energy, all the neighbors. I saw, when I was working the, the non-emergency phone line, I was just really surprised, I shouldn't be surprised, but I was very thankful for everyone was so kind, and everyone was very expectant. very expectant of the answers that I was giving. I felt like I was just disappointing people with the answers all night. But everyone was really, really kind, and they, they just needed somewhere to go and so really, or somewhere to go for their questions and other frustrations. And I was really happy to see the amount of community involvement and the amount of neighbors that came out for each other. So I'm very happy to see that. In a disaster like this, a community can either go to its worst or show its best, and this community definitely showed its best. So thank you. The reason I wanted to say something was that I do know that if Bresnan customers, they can ask for a power, a power outage credit, I believe that's what it's called, that is super easy to apply. You just have to call or use their chat function to, to get it applied to your, to your internet bill and I believe phone bill. So you just have to ask for that. And then, I don't know how much it is or if it's, but I think every dollar's worth it. So I'll see next billing cycle what, what I got. And then be sure to check your homeowners and your renters insurance to see if they cover refrigerated products. Most policies, I believe, it's an additional rider, but I would double check anyways. I just wanted to, oh yeah, reiterate that it doesn't make you a doomsday prepper to keep water and a couple of day supplies in your basement, because I definitely tapped into mine and need to replenish that. So, and also, be sure to make an emergency plan with, with your family in case phones do go down, to have an emergency meeting spot or what you would do in case of lack of communication, especially in today's world when you can get ahold of anybody like that. It's important to have a plan if you cannot do that. So I just wanted to say, say that, and thank you to everybody.
Thank you for those tips. That's, that's great. Appreciate that. Councilor Jordan.
Yeah, thank you. I just wanted to say really quickly that, you know, Ward 6 got hit pretty hard, and we were one of the last places to get our services restarted, but the neighbors really kicked in. I just really, I have the best neighbors in the world. We had people doing laundry, we had people freezing ice, the people across the road had power, we didn't have power. It just really reinvigorated my hope in humanity. The neighborhood, we live in an awesome, in an awesome town, and this storm, unfortunately or fortunately, really brought people together, and it was extremely heartwarming. And I wanted to say thank you to all my neighbors who helped look after me and vice versa. I had my chainsaw going for about four days, and it was fantastic. So just a shout out to our wonderful town. Thank you.
Well said, Councilor Jordan. Thank you. Thank you for that. I'll, I'll just lastly mention, before we move on, that council members, we are, and members of the public, this is good for you to know as well, we are, we've made the decision to deploy our Type 3 Incident Command here locally in Missoula. That is so we can tackle the, the tree debris and issues around here as soon as possible. We are still in the height of fire season, and so we are basically deploying many of our Wildland firefighter resources and folks that are on our Missoula Fire Department team and others that may go to other locations, and they're going to be here helping us instead. And there'll be some additional costs associated with this, and so we'll be keeping you up to date as we move forward. But we made the call that we feel like it's, it's better to get this taken care of as soon as possible, rather than drag it out for months, which it seriously could, and it still will. I mean, it will take a while, obviously, for the amount of debris to be handled, but we are deploying our Type 3 Incident Command and Response. So more to come on that. Thank you again, everybody, and appreciate the opportunity for an update. Oh, I'm sorry. Councilor Jones.
Hi. Sorry, I am not in person, but as you can hear me, I'm sick, and I've also got other people tapping into my internet, so I'm not turning my camera on. I just briefly, since we're on this topic, wanted to say again, thank you to everyone. Missoula just brought out their best, and I was sick the whole week, so I was not helping people as much as I would have liked, but I kept away from them, so I didn't get sick. But I did want to point out that on my block, we had four large, very large trees completely uprooted. And I will never, one of them especially, five-foot diameter blue spruce in the trunk. It was just gigantic. All of those trees somehow fell either into the street or in the front yard or boulevard. A couple of front porches were sheared off, but if any of those had fallen on homes, we would have very different, people could have been killed. So I will never understand how Missoula came through without a death, but that is such a blessing, and I'm very grateful for that. I also wanted to give a shout out, one of the trees that was in the road, I think it was yesterday, the city of Helena had their crew over here, their urban foresters, I think, working on it. They had their truck out there. So appreciate the rest of Montana coming in to help, and thanks for all of your work, Mayor. I know this was a big curveball thrown at you, and I appreciate how you've managed it. It's, it's, I think Missoula's doing really well. Thanks so much.
Wonderful. Thank you for your comments, Councilor Jones, and wishing you the best of health. Hope you feel better soon. And thank you, thank you for that. It's nothing like learning on the fly, that's for sure. But I'll tell you what, this, the team of people, I mean, I cannot commend the group of city and county staff associated with Incident Command and our Office of Emergency Management. We're in good hands. All right, so we don't have any public hearings this evening, and we're going to go right to our next item of business, which is really our consent agenda. And so Ms. Trimble, if you wouldn't mind reading the consent agenda items, please?
I would love to, and I will share my screen. Give me one second. All right. We will begin the consent agenda with a motion to approve accounts payable or claims for checks dated July 30th, 2024 in the amount of $2,027,559.42. Moving on, a motion to confirm the mayor's appointment of Victoria Emmons to the Missoula Civic Television Advisory Commission for a term beginning immediately and expiring on December 31st, 2026. We have a motion to reappoint Paul Karandine, apologies if I said that wrong, to the Affordable Housing Resident Oversight Committee as a regular banking finance member for the term beginning immediately and ending on May 31st, 2027. A motion to approve Jackson Contractor Group Change Order Number 4 in the amount of $77,520.67, add 15 days to the contract time and authorize the mayor to sign. That's for the North Side Pedestrian Bridge. That part didn't make it into the motion. We also have a motion to approve the resolution authorizing the Fleet Maintenance Director as an authorized signer to execute documents related to vehicle titles on behalf of the city of Missoula. We have a motion to approve and authorize the mayor to sign a memorandum of understanding for the IAFF, which is the International Association of Firefighters, collective bargaining agreement that provides for an additional market rate wage adjustments in 2025, this year, 2025. And finally, a motion to approve and authorize the mayor to sign and adopt a city-county pre-disaster mitigation draft plan update that we originally heard in February and maybe could have used.
Great, thank you very much. And I see, Ms. Jones, your hand is up as the first, but I think that might be previous. I'm going to move on to Councilor Campbell here in the room.
Thank you, ma'am, Mayor. I'd like to motion that item 8.4 be removed from the consent agenda.
Okay, would you like to separate that item?
I'd speak to it if I have an opportunity.
Absolutely, you bet. All right, so 8.4 will be removed from the consent agenda, and we will vote on that separately. And would you like to, we'll, we'll speak to that when we get to it, is that okay? Yeah, okay, great. So any other council members wish to separate an item? Yes?
Yeah, I would like to separate item 8.6, the wage adjustment for the International Association of Firefighters, because I'll be recusing myself from voting on that as I'm married to a city firefighter.
Thank you, Councilor Farmer. I didn't recognize you at the front there, so you hear that, Ms. Trimble. That was Councilor Farmer. So 8.4 and 8.6 will be separated. Any other items to be separated from the council agenda? All right, not seeing any then. We will be voting on 8.1, 2, 3, 5, and 7. And so, Ms. Trimble, if you'll do a voice vote on that, please.
Absolutely. So voting on the consent agenda except for 8.4 and 8.6, all in favor, please say aye.
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 And any opposed? All right, those pass unanimously.
Okay, thank you. Councilor Anderson, I see that your hand is raised. Is this something you want to address before we move on to those other items?
No, Madam Mayor, I actually just wanted to quickly speak to the IAFF increase, but when we get to that, I'm happy to just quickly say a couple of words.
Okay, great, great, thank you. Why don't we take them in order, and so we'll take item 8.4 first. Councilor Campbell, would you like to speak to this?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So I've reached a point personally, and I'm always speaking on my own behalf, that I look back at the history of this bridge and the amount of money that was initially put into the initial construction of that bridge some 20 years ago, and the amount of use we got of that bridge, and now we come back, we've put a substantial amount of money into the renovation of this bridge once again. I think of, just me personally, if I ain't gotten to the point where, you know, I can't find myself supporting any more expenditure of money on this bridge at this point in time for what they want to use the $77,000 for. So with that, I'll be voting against this. Thank you.
Okay, you bet. Any other council comments on this agenda item? Councilor Melson.
This bridge is in Ward 1, and when I ran last year, one of the main complaints I heard from the North Side was connectivity from their home to downtown and beyond, and the frustrations that I heard from the North Side around their inability to move from their neighborhood to other desirable places of town were really sad. This is a basic form of infrastructure that we should be able to provide for our residents, whether they're on foot, in a wheelchair, on a bike, or any other modality, a skateboard or a scooter. And I am just so excited that this bridge is finally getting complete and will be open soon. So I'm very supportive of this and the changes that are being requested in terms of the fencing and the aesthetics. This has been a real hassle for the folks in the neighborhood for many years, and I'm just excited that this is finally getting reopened, so, yeah.
Thank you, Councilor Melson. Appreciate your comments. Councilor Basika.
I'll be quick. I, I agree with what both my colleagues, Mr. Campbell and Mr. Melson, said. This bridge is necessary. However, I agree with Mr. Campbell's frustrations. I'm incredibly frustrated with the way, the length and the amount of, the amount of time and the amount of dollars that are going into this. So I'll be with Mr. Campbell on this one.
Thank you for your comments on that. And Councilor Anderson, I know your hand is raised for IAFF on the next agenda item, but if you care to comment on this. I also see that, Councilor Basara, you are in attendance, for the record, and looks like you'd like to speak to this.
Yeah, I just, I am happy to support this, this item, and, you know, it is frustrating to have to continue to put additional funds to infrastructure, but that's, that's just the way infrastructure is. And, you know, I, I don't think that we should let our frustrations penalize the connectivity that a neighborhood like this one desperately needs. I think it will improve the connection for our, for, for the entire community. When you have people able to move around in multiple ways, it eases the traffic congestions around the community. So this is not just a North Side and West Side improvement, a much-needed connection improvement, but it, it's something that's going to serve the entire community. So in looking at that, I am happy to support it. I think the neighborhoods have been waiting for this to happen for a long time, so it's, I'm glad that it's in front of us and moving forward. Thank you.
You bet. Thank you very much. Any other council comments on this item? Okay. Are there any public comment on this agenda item? Anybody in the room? Yeah, come on up. Ms. Sanford.
Hi, once again, Gracie Sanford from Lower Rattlesnake. I also have a lot of friends that live in the North Side. I know a lot of people in the Rattlesnake neighborhood as well. And just want to echo Councilmember Melson's points a few minutes ago and say that this is something that changes people's quality of life to be able to have this. People, I don't know if you know this, in Missoula, a lot of us don't like to drive. We like to walk and bike everywhere, myself included. And one of my very best friends, her mother lives just next to the bridge. She bought a condo there, and she rarely drives. And to be able to have this bridge back up and running means that she can get downtown again in a safe way. The walking path underneath Orange Street Bridge is a totally different conversation, but that's what people are using now. I try not to go there. I think most of us try not to go through there. It's long, you're gated in, it's not great. This is an excellent bridge for people to be able to use from North Side and just getting around Missoula. So I think there's a lot of public support that I've seen from my community and from my neighborhoods. And I want to live in a beautiful city. I want my tax dollars to go towards infrastructure that I can use, that my friends can use, that my neighbors can use, and I want it to be beautiful. I don't want it to be gross and ugly and just the bare minimum. This is how I want my tax dollars spent, is for infrastructure and for it to look nice so that when I see it, it's a bridge that goes way up high. Everybody can see it, you can see it for a long ways. I don't want it to be an eyesore either. And so I'm not entirely sure what the funds are for, but if it's for the last little bit so that we can finally get it open, and if it happens to be something to make it a little bit safer, maybe a little bit more beautiful, I'm all for it.
Thank you for your comments, Ms. Sanford. Are there others that wish to make a public comment tonight? Mr. Moore.
I invite you to not get old. I don't really know about this bridge too much about it.
Mr. Moore, do you want to identify yourself first?
I'm sorry. Bob Moore, M-O-O-R-E.
Thank you.
The $77,000 doesn't do much to a bridge. It's basically nothing. So if this will fix whatever is wrong permanently, then I would vote for it. If it won't, and it sounds like it won't, then I am against paying $77,000 on the bridge.
Thank you for your comments, Mr. Moore. Other public comment in the room tonight? Come on up.
Good evening. Ochul H. Behmeler, spelled B-O-E-H-M-E-L-E-R. And as to the pedestrian bridge project, it has been pretty much on standstill for a long time, but there was a time where it doesn't exist at all. The underpass was usable, still is usable. At this point, the costs of this town are insurmountable for so many people. I don't know if there's been attempts to access federal infrastructure dollars, or if that would be applicable to this particular project, but anything possible that you can do throughout your budgets to lessen the burdens upon the taxpayers in this town is greatly appreciated by all the residents here. And anything against that, that while functional and aesthetic does add to the costs of the people in this town, will be affecting them. And I meet many of these people that are, they're done. They have to move out, there's nowhere to go, there is nowhere for them to live, there's the crisis of the storm, and people are at their wit's end. I really ask you to think very hard about the upcoming budgets, including this one, especially since this is the item that we're discussing, and be considering where these dollars are going and how they're actually affecting real citizens that really are just scraping by right now in this moment. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Are there others in the room that wish to make public comment? All right, not seeing any in the room. Are there any members of the public that wish to make public comment for Councilor Nugent? Mr. Larson.
Yeah, Matt Larson, more three. I think people kind of missed-
Uh, I think, uh, people kind of missed the, the forest for the trees with this one. Um, uh, commenting earlier about the need for connectivity, yes, this bridge is needed. Um, but, but we, we need fair, uh, bidding with these bridges and these product, uh, projects, um, concerning the city. Uh, this, this project was bid at around 2.5 million, now it's coming into close to, to three. Um, you know, we, we're getting used to this now as a city, uh, you know, Bear Tracks Bridge got worked on four times. Um, you know, the, the, the pedestrian bridge over Reserve Street, there's been numerous issues with. Um, we, we just, we just need better results, and it seems like we're not getting them. And that's more the issue here. It's not that we don't need this bridge and we don't want this bridge. It's that councillors that are dissenting votes on this are saying that we, we want better results when bids come in and, and not have them go over so drastically and not have them be redone two, three, and four times. I think it's just such, such poor results, it's almost indebatable. Um, but, like, uh, you know, it's good to see councillors making disclosures and, uh, it's, it's good to see changes at City Council today. Um, and it's, I'm glad to be able to comment on some of these items before they're passed. Um, the, uh, I hope to be able to comment on the claims items as well. Um, there's $15,000 being spent by the Missoula Police Department on ammunition today. Um, I think that's a little alarming.
Thank you for your comments, Mr. Larson. I am, uh, Ms. Trimble, if you could help me, uh, get Ms., uh, Counselor Cheryl to a presenter status so she can share her mic? That would be really helpful. Counselor Cheryl, I see your message here. I can't for some reason do that on my, um...
That was, uh, I can, I can use it now.
Okay, great, 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 all right, we have you there. All right, are there any members of the public on this agenda item online that still wish to speak? Okay, not seeing any. Counselor Nugent, is this a, a comment on this agenda item?
It, it is, I wanna clarify something from public comment.
Please, please do.
I, I think that maybe there's a little bit of misunderstanding. If, if the city doesn't approve the change orders, the project stalls and the million-plus dollars that have been spent on it are basically wasted. It's like building a house and having the foundation poured and the siding poured, and then there's a roof change. You don't get your money back for the money you've already spent. So I understand the frustration with the contract, and I don't disagree with some of the comments that, that if we are having issues with change orders and contracts, um, that's something we need to pay attention to. Uh, we also follow the state laws and, uh, on the lowest bidder wins that meets the qualifications. And, uh, you know, we are, to a certain extent, fairly governed by those. So I understand the frustration, but if we voted this down and they can't open the bridge because we don't spend this money, then we would have wasted a whole lot more money by taking this stand. So I, I get what people are saying, but, um, we're not deciding on starting the bridge renovation from scratch right now, and I just wanna make sure that's clear.
Thank you for your clarifying comments. Counselor Melson?
Just another quick clarifying comment as well. Um, I've got an email from staff, July 2024, North Side Pedestrian Bridge Project Update, and the first line is that the project remains on budget and is expected to open in late July, weather permitting. So, weather permitting, um, being the caveat there, but just a reminder that the project is still on budget from the most recent communications from staff.
Great, thank you for that clarifying comment as well. All right, all right. Any other comments from council? Not seeing any, then we'll go ahead and do a roll call vote on this agenda item. Please, Ms. Trimble, when you're ready.
All right, voting on what was formerly eight point four, the North Side Pedestrian Bridge renovation, beginning with Anderson. Yes. Becerra?
Yes.
Campbell?
No.
Carlino?
Yes.
Farmer?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
Melson?
Yes.
Nugent?
Yes.
Cheryl? Cheryl? She still is a presenter, but I don't hear her, so, uh, Vasika?
No.
Okay. That's eight in favor and two opposed.
Great, thank you, that item passes, thank you very much. We'll now move on to Agenda Item Eight Point Six, which is the International Association of Firefighters, or I A F F, Memorandum of Understanding for Market Wage Adjustments. I'll first, I know you already spoke to this, um, Counselor Farmer. If you, just because you're the one that separated it, um, because you have a conflict of interest because your spouse is a firefighter, so you're recusing yourself. Do you wish to say anything else?
Um, I would just say, uh, thank you to the community for passing the fire levy that makes it so that we are able to make these market rate adjustments. Um, I think it's a well-deserved wage adjustment, um, and that would be about it.
Thank you, um, very much. And, uh, Counselor Anderson, I see your hand is raised.
Yeah, yes, thank you so much, Madam Mayor. And yes, I wanna echo, uh, Councilwoman Farmer's comments to thank the community for passing the fire levy. Um, it doesn't take instances like last week's to really, um, you know, make us understand and appreciate the people who answer the call to public service. Uh, being a firefighter is a noble endeavor, and it's not something that people do to, um, you know, get rich. They do it because they have a, um, a drive to help their community and be in service to others. And, um, we are very appreciative of everyone at the Missoula Fire Department, as well as the Missoula Police Department. And really, it took the community stepping up and really showing their support for, uh, these men and women to pass the fire levy in, you know, what was understandably or is continuing to be understandably, you know, a tough time with rising expenses and whatnot. But this allows us to make sure that we are paying wages, um, that are competitive, that we are able to recruit, um, top-line folks to our community to serve in these roles, and, um, that we don't lose them to other communities, um, who are paying better. So, um, thank you to the community, thanks to the firefighters for all that they do. And, um, I'm just really happy to support this, and I know that there will be other good things coming because of the passage of the levy, but this is just the first in many of them. So, thanks so much.
Thank you, Counselor Anderson, for your comments. Any other council comments on this agenda item? Okay, not seeing any, then we'll go ahead and move to, uh, public comments on this agenda item. And, um, I'll go ahead and see if there are folks in the room that wish to make public comment on this agenda item. Not seeing any in the room, then, online, um, Mr. Larson, go right ahead.
Uh, I was glad to see that we could, uh, pass the levy too, I guess, and, uh, put that, uh, that cost onto the taxpayer here, um, as much as we need to. Um, and now with these wage increases, we will be the top-paying city in the state of Montana for firemen wages. So we should not have any issues, uh, keeping people on, I don't think, after this. But, uh, awesome. It should be, uh, it should be a great place to be a fireman here and continue to be.
Thank you for your comments, Mr. Larson. Is there any other public comment online? Looking, I don't see any here. All right. Counselor Cheryl, I know you had a technology glitch there. Would you like to make a comment on this agenda item?
Well, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, because I voted yes on the, um, the bridge. Sure.
Counselor Cheryl, I'm sorry, you're, it sounds like you have a really challenging connection.
Just say ditto to what my colleagues have already said.
Okay, we got that last part, that's perfect, thank you very much. Sorry. Counselor Cheryl, your, your comments were a little jarbored, but you said ditto to what my colleagues said, so that's pretty clear. Because there's not... So that works out good, thank you. All right, then, then we're gonna go ahead and take a roll call vote on this agenda item. Ms. Trimble?
All right, voting on the International Association of Firefighters Memorandum of Understanding for Market Wage Adjustments, beginning with Campbell.
Yes.
Carlino?
Yes.
Farmer abstains. Jones?
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
Nelson?
Yes.
Nugent?
Yes.
Cheryl?
Yes.
Vasika?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
And Becerra?
Yes.
All right, that's 10 in favor and one abstention.
Great, thank you, that item passes. Uh, I'm, I'm incredibly sorry for the awkwardness of this, but I forgot to ask for public comment on the, the rest of the main party, the main, uh, bit of the consent agenda. So excluding eight point four and eight point six, what, is there any public comment on the consent agenda? It is already passed, um, but just wanna make sure that you do have an opportunity to give public comment on that. I'm not seeing any in the room here. Give you a second to look at your notes, though. And I do see that Mr. Larson has, your hand up, go ahead, Mr. Larson.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I, I wanted to, uh, point to a few claims. Uh, I guess the most pointedly, the $15,000 MPD is going to use to spend on ammunition. Uh, it's a lot of money, um, the most I think I've ever seen in the few years that I've tracked all the expenses of ammunition purchases by MPD. So it leaves me just to wonder why there's so much being purchased. Um, I mean, maybe the election, I don't know. It's just, it is curious, um, and it is a lot. Um, and then there's some other, there's other stuff, uh, on there too. Um, the, um, let me look at my notes, sorry, I wasn't expecting this here. Hold on.
No problem.
That's all, uh, that's all I can see right now. I'll email about it, I guess. Thank you.
You bet, Mr. Larson, thank you for your comments. Are there any council members that wish to change their vote based on public comment? After hearing public comment? Okay, not seeing anybody in the room here, nor am I seeing any online, so that vote remains the same. Thank you, everybody, for entertaining my rustiness. That then wraps up Agenda Item Number Eight. We'll move on to regular business, and we have one remaining item, which is Item Nine Point One D. It's under the Housing, Redevelopment and Community Programs Committee Report. And, uh, what we'll do is we will ask Chair Jones to go ahead and make the motion, put the motion on the floor, and then we can have council discussion. So Counselor Jones, you ready for that?
Great, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, wonderful, the motion, excuse me, the recommended motion is to not pass Amending Resolution Eight Four Four Zero to increase the minimum annual allocation to the Affordable Housing Trust Fund to $200,000. And when appropriate, I would like to speak to that.
Okay, thank you very much. And now we'll go ahead and, uh, shift it to council, council comment. Uh, and I see a couple of hands raised online here, Counselor Anderson.
Thanks so much, Madam Mayor. Um, I have a quick parliamentary procedure thing and then a comment, if that's okay.
Please.
Yes, to clarify for folks, um, so if we, it's kind of inverse of what we normally do, a vote yes vote is to basically, um, uphold the recommendation that came out of committee. So, um, a yes don't would be to, um, affirm that, no, we should not make this change. Um, and to which I will be voting for that, um, because I, I realize that the Affordable Housing Trust Fund is an incredible tool that we have at our disposal, and we try whenever possible to drive funds to that. But we also understand that, that, um, three-year looks a little bit different in budgets, and, um, the furrow on Dale's brow changes from year to year. And I, we've had this discussion numerous times about increasing this, and, and I think that, you know, we would all love to be able to put, you know, as many resources as we can to it, but that's just not the realm and reality in which we live. And this hundred thousand is, you know, a minimum, and when opportunities arise, we put more in, but mindful that, you know, there may be some years, for whatever X Y Z reasons, that we're only able to put the 100,000 in. And the more we, you know, year over year allocate general funds to various things, we end up with less and less flexibility. And, um, I don't think that that's a good way that we should be approaching, you know, when we are so limited in the ability to either increase or, um, we're at our cap for, uh, you know, lobbying or for, you know, allocating dollars and whatnot. So as much as I am an absolute fan of the Affordable Housing Trust Fund, I think it's an incredible tool that we have and, and wanna try to find as much money to allocate towards it, I am not in favor of increasing the year-over-year amount that is required to go into this, just because I feel like it doesn't, oh, take into consideration, you know, various changes in budget year from year to year. So that is my, uh, comment, thanks so much.
Thank you, Counselor Anderson, and Counselor Campbell.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I too, as my board mate, Counselor Anderson just iterated, uh, in support generally of the Affordable Housing Trust Fund that we have available to us in this community. But I am gonna be supporting the motion as well, simply because we have budget season going up. We don't know what the numbers are gonna come from Department of Revenue in terms of, you know, what our allocation's gonna look like. I think we have to have that discussion first before we talk about any increase in funding of, you know, any particular thing, um, going on in the city until we see those numbers. Um, I would also add that, you know, we still have the pending sales of properties on West Broadway, um, to include the City of Missoula Motel. And, you know, presumably, money allocated from that would go to the Affordable Housing Trust Fund. And I would hope there'd be an opportunity, you know, once those transactions are complete, to perhaps, you know, reinvest that money to some degree, to where perhaps, in perpetuity, you know, we could add to that yearly 100,000 dollars, um, by X amount of dollars that, you know, we would obtain in, uh, yearly interest, uh, from that money. So I hope it's something that we don't squander right away, but there may be opportunity there for raising that 100,000 dollar minimum, uh, using proceeds from that sale, um, just an idea. But, uh, for now, I'll be in support of the motion, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Campbell, and Counselor Jones?
Thanks, um, I did speak to this extensively during the committee meeting. Um, a couple of thoughts, though. I did wanna point out that in, um, Counselor Carlino's referral and the proposed resolution, it stated that the rental vacancy rate had been under 3% since spring of 2020. And I just wanted to clarify that by the end of 2023, our vacancy rental rate was actually 4.4%, and it's been continuing on an uphill trajectory. And hopefully, we're at 5% now when, uh, the 2024 data comes in. So I just wanted to clarify that, first of all. Second of all, um, I'm not in favor of this, so I'll be voting yes on the motion. As I referenced during the committee meeting, we have numerous other tools that we use to the best of our ability to funnel towards affordable housing and some specifically through the Affordable Housing Trust Fund. the Affordable Housing Trust Fund. Over $1 million annually from tax increments financing from the MRA budget, federal dollars that we can use, we funnel those towards the analysis portion of the Affordable Housing Trust Fund and CDBG, home funds, all of that. They are used very intentionally and thoughtfully there. We use our park and open space funds, our transportation and road district funds, our infrastructure funds for projects. Anytime we can use those projects to overlap, to help support an affordable housing project, we do that. So all of this is in our Resolution Number Eight, Eight, I think, 8440 from 2020, when we pass the Affordable Housing Trust Fund. So we have other tools. We've got some real estate work we're selling that will funnel in that direction. I, too, excuse me, am very concerned about constraining our general fund, because we use a general fund for items for which we have no other funding sources. And we do have other funding sources for this. Also, as we go into what I anticipate will be a very difficult budget session, we have some unfunded things that we need to look at closely, specifically the homeless camping issue that we passed a resolution for, that we're going to need to put some funds towards that to fund it as best we can. And then finally, we just had this huge storm. I guarantee you, we've got folks working overtime. This will be expensive. And if we get FEMA dollars and other federal dollars coming in, great. It's a long process. It's no guaranteed. This is one of those unexpected items that has come up, and I think it's very important to keep the flexibility of our general fund as much as possible. So I'm not in favor of passing this... I'm sorry, I want to say, I'm in favor of passing the motion that does not advance this change to our budget.
Thank you for your comments, Counselor Jones and Counselor Carlino.
Whenever it comes to spending money to, and using city resources to remove people who are camping that have no place to sleep at night, we seem to not be concerned about how much that's going to cost as a council, how that's going to affect our city budget. But when it comes to funding more money towards affordable housing, there seems to be a lot of concern about how we're going to fund it. We have a lot of projects that we have requests for money from the Affordable Housing Trust Fund for, and we, as a council, have the authority to help fund more of those projects by making this more of a budget priority. I see this resolution amendment as a small step forward to ensuring that we're going to put more money towards this Affordable Housing Trust Fund each year. This fiscal year, it got the bare minimum amount, and it would be a shame to seek at that again in the future. You know, this, in committee, this, you know, ended up on a four to five vote, so only a one-vote difference. And, you know, I think if you polled our community, it would pass overwhelmingly that this is a budget priority and something worth using funds for. So I hope that we are open to putting more money towards this in the future, because we're not going to be able to make housing human right unless we pump a lot more money consistently, year after year, into the affordable housing.
Thank you for your comments, Counselor Carlino. Counselor Jordan?
Yeah, thank you. Daniel, I just want to thank you for continuing to bring this forward. You know, cities' priorities to, one of the cities' priorities is to address affordable housing. And by doubling the amount that we throw into the Affordable Housing Trust Fund, we certainly are not going to break the bank of our 111 million-dollar budget. I, too, have noticed that sometimes we have money and sometimes we don't. I think about our first budget cycle, where at the closing hour, we almost voted to spend $45,000 on a new motorcycle for the police department, and this was at the 11th hour. I don't know where that $45,000 was going to come from, but it nearly passed. And I'm not saying the police don't need a motorcycle. But what I am saying is that I do feel like the budget sometimes is really flexible and sometimes it isn't. I think about how much money we've given parks and the Public Works Department to clear our folks who are survival camping. That was in our original funding request a couple of years ago, but we found the money to do that. And I would argue that it, we spend more money to move people around than we would if we told them where they could go. I also just want to, you know, point back to the Missoula Economic Partnership's report on the unhoused that they did, that showed clearly that the largest reason for our homeless population is affordability. I think about how long some of our properties have been sitting on the market that we're all waiting to have them sell. And, you know, quite frankly, I just got a call from a constituent today, still complaining about the sleepy inn and about how we paid over-market value for it, and we're selling it for less, way less than what we spent on it. I get that it's an empty lot now, but I just question the changing goalposts that we continue to see on city council. When the majority decide to vote for something, it seems fine and feasible, but when the minority try to bring something forward, it's absolutely unattainable. And I will also point out that if Mr. Nugent's ordinance change, our community council rule change passes, Daniel, you will not be able to bring this item forward in the future and continue to press our colleagues to really put their money where their mouths are and focus on how we can address the housing crisis going forward, because you're going to need four people to sponsor it or six people to approve it behind closed doors. And so I just, I just, the goalpost changes all the time, and I think that it's really easy for folks to talk about things in the moment and not remember what they've said in the past that conflicts with what they're saying in the moment. We need to spend more money on our Affordable Housing Trust Fund. I mentioned last week that I met a young family in the park, at Franklin Park, who are living in a mobile home that they, that is falling apart around their ears. They are being gouged for a rental space. This is a young family. One of them is a returning citizen. They have a brand-new baby, and they don't know how they're going to afford to live here. And this is a really, really easy way for us to boost our affordable housing funds. And we're not doing it, even though housing is a priority, and we can find money in other instances when we want to. And I see Mr. Nugent has his hand up, so I'm sure he's going to comment about my pushback on your proposal. But it really is going to make it so we can't bring these policies forward to discuss on the council floor and continue to bring issues that are important to our constituents without a minority consensus to even get them to the floor. Daniel needs to be able to continue to bring this forward. We need to keep having this conversation, and we need to keep checking in with ourselves and see if we're giving a consistent message, because I would argue that a lot of folks on council are not giving a consistent message.
Thank you for your comments, Counselor Jordan. Counselor Nugent?
Thanks, Mayor Davis. Counselwoman Jordan, I'm not sure if you were at committee on Wednesday, but I actually voted in support of this, and I intend to vote against it, against the motion tonight in support, which will be the same vote Counselwoman Carlino makes and the same vote you make. And so I think that part of the message that you are pushing back against is kind of counterproductive, because I'm willing to be part of your coalition. But Mr. Carlino didn't talk to me ahead of time. You didn't talk to me ahead of time. I might have been able to help you on this. So I am supportive of this, but part of building coalitions and getting things forward is not side-swiping your colleagues without having all the facts. And I think it's really unfortunate that that's the tact you took tonight. And I also think that with a quick read of the rules as they are now, or potentially as they are in the future, you cannot say with certainty that anything wouldn't come forward, that everything is case by case.
Thank you for your comments, Counselor Nugent. Are there any other council comments on this agenda item this evening? Not seeing any, then we'll go ahead and ask for public comment on this agenda item, and I'll start with folks in the room. If there's any public comment on this agenda item, come on up. Come on up.
I want you to spell my name again.
Always.
Okay, well, is it timed then included?
It is.
Does the timing start after the spelling of the law?
Well, it normally starts before, but I paused it while we had this conversation.
Okay, it's Akilash Bemler, spelled B-O-E-H-M-O-E-R.
Great.
Okay. Just really quick on the comments that just occurred, and I don't want to waste much of I have seen since the COVID thing that the numbers of council people that arrive in person to do the public's business has been greatly reduced, and I find this very concerning. And I'm seeing it right now, where we have council people in disagreement, maybe could have worked things out in person, and there's glitches. I just encourage those that haven't been coming or that find it slightly inconvenient to, please make the effort to represent your people in person. We do appreciate it, and we do support the leaders that we've elected until we don't. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bumler. Did I get that right?
It's Akilash Bemler.
Akilash Bemler.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate your comments. All right. Come on up.
BK, Montana, Spitzmacher, S-P-I-T-Z-M-A-C-H-R. I'm going to agree with Bob Campbell, because we don't certainly know what our budget's going to be at the time and what income we're going to have. And in regards to the sleepy inn property in that vicinity, I've noticed a lot of for-sale signs in the area. Let's go get the right developer and bring up the value of the property.
Thank you, Mr. Spitzmacher. Come on up.
My name is Chris Foster, F-O-S-T-E-R, and I hadn't planned on commenting about this tonight, but I just wanted to bring forth something that maybe people have missed. I noticed this with the discussion about urban camping from the working groups. I'm all for helping homeless people, and I'm getting to this, but I think they're related. So, but I think that one of the things that might have been going on in that conversation was the normalization of homelessness. So the idea is to get them off the streets and not, you know, make life easier for them on the streets. So for the Housing Trust Fund, I think that the city, I think, does generally a very, very good job as far as promoting affordable housing in this town. But there again, are we normalizing poverty? I just want to encourage the city to think about a strategy that raises wages in addition to making housing more affordable. I think that would have so many salutary effects for the budget, for the tax base, and for other things. Thanks so much.
Thank you for your comments, Mr. Foster.
Bob Moore, M-O-O-R-E, I want you to say that I agree with Mr. Campbell. It was so good to see him try to watch what we're spending. Most of the, I basically never hear trying to get our budget down. I don't think I've ever heard any council member wanting to do that. I think it'd be a worthwhile thing. We talk about $70,000 for bridge work, and yet we're going to write a check to a real estate developer here for over $10 million. You don't seem to be interested in some mighty four citizens around Missoula that is paying for this $10 million. And one of the points I'm going to make later is $100,000 paid to a realtor, developer, starting back in, I think it was October 2000.
Mr. Moore, is this in regards to this agenda item?
I'm sorry?
Let's stay focused on this particular recommendation, recommended motion.
So I just wish you would change the entire attitude of what you're doing.
Thank you for your comments, Mr. Moore. Any other public comment in the room? Come on up.
Once again, Gracie Sanford, S-A-N-F-O-R-D. I just want to echo that, at least in my circles and my community, what and from what I hear from the city, and we have our community forums, and we all get together from the leadership, the neighborhood leadership teams, what I hear is affordable housing is important to the city. And we have committees for it, and we have different, you know, nonprofit organizations. We have a lot of nonprofits here, and all I hear is housing is an issue, homelessness is an issue here, we're going to do something about it. So now to come here and hear from several council members that, okay, we understand it's an issue, but we're not going to vote for this, but here's an opportunity for us to vote for something that might help us get a step closer to working on our affordable housing issue, that might help us get closer to fewer people without homes. It's very discouraging. So I'd just like to thank Counselor Kristen Jordan for her comments, and that they echo a lot of what I hear from my neighbors. And it's very poignant that we do have money for some things. We have endless, seemingly endless budget for police funds and not many funds for affordable housing and for helping people and social working and all of that. So I just want to echo that what I hear is what Councilmember Jordan had just said.
Thank you for your comments, Ms. Sanford. Anybody else in the room? All right. Not seeing anybody else in the room. How about public comment online? Mr. Larson?
Hi, Matt Larson, Ward Three. Thank you for allowing me to speak. I'd like to echo the statements of Mr. Carlino and Kristen Jordan. It's really great to have them on council, especially in these times, you know. And I'd also like to echo their statements specifically surrounding Rule 13, which does require a supermajority for items like this to be brought inside of the council, and does allow for items like these to be closed off from public comment. This is super crucial to this discussion, because we wouldn't even be having this discussion right now. This is so relevant, and it just is a part and parcel of some of the things that are going on in our community that people are not talking about. So thank you again to Kristen Jordan for bringing that to the forefront. And I do think it is disheartening to see a lack of communication amongst council, but I do feel as though it is to be expected with the lack of basic understanding that's going on. I think that we need to become more creative and obviously have better dialogue amongst ourselves. And I don't think that the rule changes that are coming up are conducive to that. But that's another matter entirely. What is apparent is that we're not, we're not spending money and putting it into the hands of citizen accountable entities such as the Citizen Affordable Housing Trust Fund, and it is mostly a sham at this point. The minimum is put in, and bank sidewalks are bought, and corporate welfare is engaged in through MRA by and large. Yes, some affordable housing projects are done through TIF and ERD, but very little. And other funding sources are much needed, and we always have a rough budgeting year ahead of us. So it's never an appropriate time to do it. But what I do see is a lack of understanding of how pushing people around with our EMS and first responders and spending money that way is better than finding a place and building a place for people to be with these funds. I think that's an unimaginative and status quo answer from a bunch of ivory tower people.
Mr. Larson, you're at three minutes.
Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Anybody else online? All right. Then it looks like council comment has wrapped up, and we'll go ahead and do a roll call vote. a roll call vote.
Okay, moving on to a roll call vote. Reminding everyone, this is a reverse vote. So a yes vote is to go with the do not pass recommendation, and a no vote is in favor of amending the Resolution 8440 to increase the minimum allocation to the Affordable Housing Trust Fund, beginning with Carlino.
No.
Yes.
Jordan.
No.
Nelson. Nugent.
Yes.
Basika. Anderson.
Yes.
Basara.
Yes.
Campbell. Okay, that is eight yeses and three nos. So the motion does not pass. The recommended motion to not pass passes.
Good job. We got you. Thank you, Ms. Trimble. I do just want to take this opportunity to add that we've talked a little, quite a bit actually, at council recently around a pretty substantial investment that the city has made through the concurrence of council, the use of tax increment financing dollars. Because the state allows the Missoula Redevelopment Agency in the city to fund affordable housing, workforce housing projects, we actually have a project underway where we are funding forty-three deed restricted homes on a land trust. There's ninety in total, or eighty-nine, rather, eighty-nine in total. But three million dollars of tax increment financing is going towards that. That does not flow through the Affordable Housing Trust Fund. It goes directly from the Missoula Redevelopment Agency to that project. But I just wanted to make sure that I did provide that context, and especially for folks that are watching online or in the room tonight. It is a substantial investment that the city has made, and it's a very unique tool, a redevelopment agency by way of state law. If we did not have a redevelopment agency and urban renewal districts in which we have the ability to accumulate tax increment financing, we would never be able to make such an investment. So there are different pots of money with a lot of different constraints and rules, but I just wanted to add that. And those buildings are under construction as I speak, and I look forward to continued updates on those as well. All right, so that wraps up our regular business items. And so now we move on to Agenda Item Number 10, which is public comment on non-Agenda items. We'll start with folks in the room. Is there public comment on non-Agenda items tonight?
BK Montana, S.P.I.T.Z.M.A.C.H.E.R. First last year I mentioned the deceit of the Pauvarello. And now we have come to the wokeness, and I've been wokenized of the Pauvarello's employees. I wasn't aware of Africa being a racist word unless you realize the context of the individual that thinks Africa is racist. I've got the answer to these people that think Africa's racist. Just go to Africa and protest the racistness of Africa. And I suspect they'd be exterminated, from what I hear on public radio, on the situation that I suspect. I don't know for sure. The deceit that's acknowledged of this council for the funding that they give them to encourage it. Now I'm gonna be speaking to our federal senators, state senators, and the governor and the legislature to step in to oversight the malicious intent of the Pauvarello. Let's change the subject of our storm. I had the gratis of sitting of a hundred-and-twenty mile of our wind gust coming through the Salt Lake City as I left the door, as I heard it on the news. The damage that was done to Salt Lake City was tremendous. But the next wonderful thing I got to do when I walked across the backyard, when I heard this boom, 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 as the ground felt like jello as a mild earthquake. I don't know what sent out more electricity problems was the wind storm or the shaking of the real estate when these wires blew out these transformers and what it took to re-electify Salt Lake City and the wind storm. I've been through both of them. But as far as the horn problem that you have in Rattlesake, that's a department of the railroad industry that you need to address.
Mr. Spitzmacher, go ahead and direct your comments towards me.
Okay, they're the bosses of the horn whistles. They can work with the state and so forth. You need to work with the big money boys, which is the railroad industry.
Thank you for your comments, Mr. Spitzmacher. Others in the room that wish to make public
Chris Foster, F.O.S.T.E.R. And based on your comments tonight, Mayor Davis, and also Councilor Cheryl's connectivity issues, I have three things that I wanted to throw out there. Hopefully they'll help somehow. The first thing is, me personally woke up the morning after a windstorm with both my mobile devices at less than 10%. So one thing that may be handy for people to have around is a charged battery brick for situations like this. I would have given a lot of money for one at that time. Also, driving around town, I've seen some cuttings in some inappropriate places. So maybe if we could remind people about the locations where they can drop off stuff. For example, I saw some right in the front entrance to Community Medical Center, maybe not the best place. Also regarding, I'm signed up for that Smart 911, and I never got anything from them. And actually, my cell service for the first twenty-four hours or so was spotty. When I had it, it was really slow. I don't know if it was just localized or if that was generalized, but that was my experience. So I just wanted to throw that out there so maybe somebody could look at that and try to prevent that in the network going forward. Thank you.
Great. Thank you for your comments, Mr. Foster. Others?
Bob Moore, M.O.O.R.E. Roger, you just spoke about mayor. I thought...
Mr. Moore, can you get a little closer to the microphone, please?
I thought the city was gonna be paying a lot more than three million, but I'll check and see if that is the correct amount. On June 11th, '24, the city wrote Rivera Development LLC, one-hundred-and-sixty-six thousand nine-hundred-and-one dollars and twenty-eight cents. I'll be requesting, and I want to know how to do this, a while back I asked for some documentation and had a hard time. Go there, go there, go there, go there, blah, blah, blah. I'd like to know where my request should go to.
After this meeting, Mr. Moore, stick around, and we'll make sure that we get you the right department that you're making a request of.
Good. It will vary sometimes. I want the public to know what it's doing with this development. I've pursued developments with the bank and the hotels and the shopping centers, millions and millions and millions of dollars taken from citizens and given to all those type people. Sleepy Inn was a joke. No, it was a sad joke. Of course, it's still sitting there. I like how you write some of the write-ups for the minutes and so forth. For example, on the Rivera, with a miracle project of ten billion dollars, it writes up Whitestone, I don't know who he is. You only wrote and said he responded in the minutes. The other council members, you said what the hell he voted, yes or no. I would like to know how Mr. Whitestone voted. And I think you ought to start writing up the minutes correctly and honestly and fairly. One application said financial implications, no effect on the general fund. How do you get all these millions of bonds and it doesn't affect anything?
Thank you for your comments, Mr. Moore.
I'd like to know how you do that.
Other public comment in the audience tonight? Come on up.
It's a rare third-time thing. Achilles Bohmeler, spelled B.O.E.H.M.O.H.L.E.R.
Thank you.
This is in regards to the storm aftermath. I expect that you don't have a timeline for the completion of the cleanup of said destruction that has spread all across Missoula. So I have a possible solution maybe you could consider. A easing of the restriction of the cleanup from the licensed arborists and a simple form of release of liability to the city for possible injuries would be possibly very successful in both employing people and cleaning up the city. You could have people with their pickups. You could have certified arborists using chainsaws, cutting these limbs up into manageable sizes, okay? I know from experience that recently down green wood is not easy. So I'm not saying you give citizens chainsaws, simply that you allow the easier portions of the cleanup to the citizens and perhaps give them a nominal payment for said work. Chainsawing all day is very difficult, but if you give people the directive to cut them up to manageable pieces and allow the citizens to act as they did directly after the storm, which was excellent and encourages civic pride and community, that might hasten the recovery of Missoula. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Mr. Achilles Bohmeler.
Yes, very good.
Thank you. Any other members of the public in the audience tonight wishing to make public comment on items not on the agenda? All right, not seeing any in the room. How about online? Are there any members of the public wishing to make public comment tonight? All right, I don't see any hands raised. So that wraps up our public comment on non-Agenda items. And the next is communications from the mayor, and I really didn't plan to say anything, but I thought I would maybe add a little context to the conversation we were having so that might answer some questions from public comment. The Scott Street Rivera Project is in the Urban Renewal District in Scott Street Renewal Area. And the state law for tax increment financing funds basically allows for infrastructure to be invested in. And so that is a very large redevelopment area with the vision for there to be over three-hundred-and-fifty homes built, ninety of which are community land trust homes. And what I mean by that are, these are homes that'll be in townhouse and condominium form. They will be on a land trust, meaning that the land is held in trust. And so the homeowners will be able to purchase those townhome and condominiums, and that will make the homes more affordable. And half of those will be more affordable but still at more of a market rate, and half will be deed restricted to people in a certain income bracket that meet the workforce housing designations. That's ninety of those homes. Then there are two-hundred-and-fifty conventional market rate apartment homes to be built on this site in addition to a public park. The Missoula Redevelopment Agency has bonded for approximately six million dollars for infrastructure that goes to all of these homes, the public park. It includes streets, storm sewer, sidewalks, curb and gutter, park, bike lanes, streetlights. Those are the kinds of things that our redevelopment dollars can fund, infrastructure. This is a large tract of land that was previously a superfund site. It's been in the making for two decades to be cleaned up to residential standards. And it is a very large piece of property that does allow for it to be revitalized and part of that neighborhood. So just for clarification for the folks in the room tonight and those watching online, there is substantial purposeful reinvestment in that project, and that six million dollars of infrastructure catalyzes the millions and millions and millions of dollars of private investment that will actually occur there as well. So we're very much looking forward to the ribbon cutting on that and more to come as that proceeds. Beyond that, I really don't have any other comments for myself, and I'll turn it over to council members, starting with folks in the room. To my right, Councilor Basika.
Thank you. I said most of my comments during the storm update, and so I did want to remind folks that next week is August, and August is budget season. So I would recommend folks who have concerns or comments about the budget, the public hearing opens on the 5th. That is when the budget will be presented, and then the public hearing will open, and then on the 19th of August is when the public hearing ends and we vote on the budget. So there's plenty of days and plenty of opportunities for comment in between those two dates. So please come and share your thoughts. Thanks.
Geez, thanks. I should have probably said that the executive budget's gonna be presented on August 5th. Thank you for making sure you included that. Thank you. Councilor Campbell?
Thank you, ma'am. Mayor Alpass tonight.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Can you tell me really quick? I wanted to comment earlier, but I did also just want to quickly say thank you specifically to our first responders and staff that responded at all hours of the night when their homes were in disarray and they ran out of the house to go help with the storm. And I just want to say really quickly that I just super appreciate their help and the communication that came out of the mayor's office, I think was super helpful as well. So just a quick shout out and thank you to our first responders for all their hard work.
Appreciate that. Thank you, Councilor Farmer. Councilor Nugent?
Thanks, Mayor Davis. I would just add to the comments I made earlier that one of the enjoyable things about being around town and helping people out the last several days is just how many complete strangers were out helping each other. And neighbors who maybe didn't even know each other would come out. And we'd pull up with a trailer in certain areas, and we'd be helping someone, and other neighbors would come out because they'd want to help them too. And it just kind of reminded you of the good that Missoulians do have. And it's fun to be reminded of that in situations like this, that this is such a great place to live.
Thank you for your comments and all your volunteer work. I can say personally, as Councilor Nugent was dazed without power asking if I had any information from Northwestern Energy, as we were in touch, he's like, I'm still moving, I'm working, loading another trailer. Thank you. Councilor Nelson?
Yeah, I'll be brief. I also want to add my voice to everyone else, thanking city staff, our emergency responders, National Guard, and fellow citizens for stepping up and taking care of your neighbors, checking on people, and rolling up your sleeves to do hard labor in a heat and smoke-filled environment to make sure that we deal with this the best we can. I also want to take this moment to shine a light on our urban forestry division, which is a very small but mighty division. They've been working nonstop since 1991, since it was created, to prune and care for our urban canopy. And And what we've just witnessed is, I mean, a biblical event that their work would not have prevented. But I just want to highlight that because we do have an urban forestry division. They're very small, but I just want to say thanks to them and the staff for their tireless work over the years protecting and taking care of our beautiful trees. We all know that it takes a long time to grow the trees that we have, 100 years in some case, 200 years in some case. And I look forward to our urban forestry division coming up with some creative strategies to rebuild our urban canopy so that we are continuing the legacy of being the city of trees. So thanks to Ben and the urban forestry folks.
Thank you for those comments, Counselor Nelson. Appreciate that. Counselors online? Any comments this evening? Not seeing any hands raised. Oh, there they come. Counselor Jones.
Want to echo everyone's comments about thanking everyone who's chipped in. I also don't want to lose sight of something else that's really important. And that is the fact that Katherine Burkhoff, who is from Missoula, who is swimming in the Olympics, doing the backstroke. She's a Hellgate High School graduate. Her father was an Olympian. And today Katherine Burkhoff had the fastest qualifying time in the preliminaries. Tomorrow are semifinals and then after that finals. So just wanted to give a shout out to her. That is an amazing accomplishment and something to celebrate.
Very cool. Thank you for your comments. Counselor Anderson?
Thanks so much, Madam Mayor, and echo the comments from my council members. And thank you, Councilmember Nelson, for bringing up the urban forestry. It's one of the things I've been talking about, just sort of the heartbreak that is associated with the storm and the loss of so many critical components of our urban canopy and urban forest and really the, you know, effects it has on our community and keeping us cool. To that point, we are unfortunately still in the peak of summer. I think it's a little cooler, where there's some rain expected. All of that will be lovely, but we are back in the triple digits by the end of the week. So just mindful as what Ms. Farmer said last week in terms of the amount of fires that we have all across the state and at that point, how many of them were human caused. Obviously, several dozens, if not more, came about because of the lightning. But just we still need to be hyper vigilant when you're out and about to be mindful of how dry it is and that we are still in the height of forest fire season and to do your part to make sure that you do not contribute to a forest fire that will have devastating effects on our infrastructure and wildlife and human life and make it harder than it already is for some folks in our community who are still recovering from the storm. So I just want to put that out there and thank everybody in advance for doing your part to keep us all safe.
Appreciate those comments. Thank you, Counselor Anderson. Counselor Jordan?
Thank you. I just wanted to state that I am really grateful that we have the option to zoom in. There are some of us on council who, actually, I'm sure everybody on council has really full lives. And being able to zoom in allows us to keep all of our balls in the air. And it is by no means reflective of how much we care about council or our colleagues or how much work we do or do not do. Being able to zoom in on council has been a big godsend for me as I have family in another country, friends across the country have dealt with sicknesses and injuries, and a new job that requires me to travel quite a bit. And so I just wanted to say thank you to the city for allowing us to continue to zoom in and to just remind folks that our appearance in person does not reflect on how much work we're doing behind the scenes to represent our constituents because I also know for a fact that everybody on council takes their representation very seriously. And there are no circumstances under which we would shirk our responsibilities simply because we're zooming in. And I just wanted to say thank you for allowing us to do that so that we can continue to manage our very busy lives. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you for that. Thank you for those comments, Counselor Jordan. President Cheryl?
Can you guys hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay. I moved a little bit. Yeah, I'm sorry I'm not there in person. I'm very, very sick today, possibly from making some bad choices about what food to save. So I will warn everyone, you know, if in doubt, you should throw it out. I think there was a saying like that at some point when I was a child. So and I really just, I want to thank the emergency responders, the fire crews. I want to personally thank Adrian Beck, Gordy Hughes, and the mayor, all of them. Sandy and I answered some phones on the info line, we'll call it, the non-emergency line. And everyone was there late, everyone was working. And I just feel thankful that all of you have been willing to put the time in that you have. And Mayor, I know, you know, in this emergency, you know, you have, we met with you yesterday, Sunday afternoon. So you've been working double time and I want to thank you for that.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that. It's a moment where we really stand up in these times. Yeah, thank you. Counselor Basara?
Thank you. I just want to say that I agree completely with Councilwoman Jordan on our ability to participate remotely. It does not diminish the care and dedication that we put to represent our constituents. So I just want to put that out. I just want to acknowledge that for our staff and our friends who are arborists or part of the urban forestry staff, the amount of work that they've had to do is immense. But I also know that the scenes that they encounter around the streets in Missoula was heartbreaking for them. This is, a lot of them, they do this with a passion. And to see a lot of trees broken like that takes a toll on the soul, I guess, for the work they do because these are their babies, you know? This is what they do because they care about it. So I appreciate the difficulty of that situation, too. I just want to thank you, Mayor, for your leadership during this process and also for the incident command staff for quickly deploying the plans that we have in place for situations like this one. I appreciate that. And also I appreciate everything that everyone's staff or neighbors have done to get Missoula back on track and on their feet. So just overall gratitude. Thanks.
Really appreciate your comments, Counselor Basara. Thank you, everybody. It's quite a team to be part of. It's thank you all very much for everything everybody has done and continues to do. And that includes every single person in Missoula and beyond. This storm had a big reach. Let's carry that forward, all right? This is a nugget of humanity and beauty that helps, I think, inspire us for the kind of society and community we want to live in. So with that, I will go ahead and adjourn the meeting at 7:59 PM. Thank you, everybody.
I want to make one comment.